Madam Chair, it is 6:00 PM and we are going to get started at this particular time. Just as a reminder to all those that are on the Zoom call, we ask for security purposes for everyone to share their video. So we'll give everyone a moment to do so and keep that video on for the meeting. So thank you so much for doing that at this time. So Madam Chair, we're just about there. Again, for those that just joined the meeting, we ask everyone to share their video for security purposes. Awesome, almost there. Give everyone a chance to get in. Okay, we're still waiting on some individuals that just came in. I know a couple of you just came in and may have missed the ask, which is our typical ask for each one of our meetings. If you just joined us and you're not sharing video, please do so at this time for security purposes. Okay, I am going to pass my share rights over to someone else so we can get started with the meeting. Again, reminder, if you haven't shared video, we want to keep you in the meeting. So please share your video so that we can keep you in the meeting. Madam Chair?
It is now 6:02 and this session of the Clarksville Montgomery County School Board is called to order. We ask that you first pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, please silence all other electronic devices in your vicinity. We will not call attendance at this time because we are required to call roll for two separate votes this evening. The first item on the agenda is the Point of Pride Awards. Mr. House?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. It is always an honor and a pleasure to celebrate the accomplishments of our students. We're quite proud of everything that they do, especially during this difficult time and very unusual time that the pandemic has pushed us into. So with that being said, I'd like to invite Dr. Bellamy, Dr. Mason Bellamy, our high school level director, to join us to walk through our first National Merit Scholarship finalist. Dr. Bellamy?
Yeah, I'll be taking.
Okay, Dr. Imperatris, for some service.
Please, yeah. CMCS students, a teacher and three schools have garnered some wonderful accomplishments over the past month. Firstly, please congratulate Nina Chong and Amanda Bean from Clarksville High and Charlotte Lang from Rossview High who have earned National Merit Scholarships. This year's competition for National Merit Scholarships began when over 1.6 million juniors in approximately 22,000 high schools took the 2017 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test, which served as an initial screen of program entrance. About 16,000 semifinalists were named on a state representational basis in numbers proportional to each state's percentage of the national total of graduated high school seniors. Semifinalists were the highest scoring program entrance in each state and represented less than 1% of the nation's seniors. To the semifinalists, each semifinalist had to complete a detailed scholarship application, which included writing an essay describing leadership positions and contributions in school and community activities, showing an outstanding academic record and being endorsed and recommended by a high school official. Semifinalists also had to take the SAT and earn scores that confirmed their performance on the initial qualifying test. From the semifinalist group, about 15,000 obtained finalist standing and about half of the finalists were chosen to receive National Merit Scholarships. Nina Chong received a scholarship from the National Merit Scholarships Corporation's own funds. Amanda Bean received a National Merit Texas A&amp;M University Scholarship and Charlotte Lang received the National Merit Vanderbilt University Scholarship. Next, please congratulate Burt Elementary, third grade teacher, Ms. Victoria McCallman, who is named one of 30 educators in the 2020-21 class of the Tennessee Educator Fellowship with the State Collaborative on Reforming Education. The Tennessee Educator Fellowship is a year-long program that gives teachers, school counselors, interventionists and librarians the opportunity to learn about educational policy and turn that knowledge into advocacy that positively impacts student achievement and educator effectiveness. Fellow chosen for this cohort come from elementary, middle and high schools in 23 districts across the state in urban, suburban and rural settings and have 353 years of combined teaching experience. Finally, the Tennessee Interstate Children's Compact Commission has named Ringgold Elementary, Rossview Middle and Rossview High Schools as three of the six inaugural Purple Star School awardees in the state. The Tennessee Purple Star Score Award was designed to highlight military-friendly schools that show a major commitment to serving students and families connected to our nation's military. Awardees receive a special recognition to display in their buildings. Schools are eligible for the award if they have a point of contact within the school that has completed a professional development component specific to the needs of military-connected students. The school website must contain a page that provides resources for military families. The school then chooses an additional activity that aligns with the school's population goals.
Thank you, Dr. Imperatris. I want to, just for a second, reflect back on, and I don't know if Nina, Amanda or Charlotte are on, but to have the opportunity to be a part of the National Merit Scholarship Corp. is a huge, huge celebration. And for those that are on, I want to celebrate them at this time. Big thumbs up, clap. Hard, hard work, very, very hard work. And we're extremely proud of everything that happens for their current and their future. Also, our Tennessee Purple Star School Awards, we're very proud of those individuals as well, not to mention our SCORE fellow. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Nolan, do we have requests to address the board?
There were two requests, but they were not related to an agenda item and they were therefore not approved. There were no other requests regarding any agenda item, so there's no one to speak tonight.
Thank you. The next agenda item is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. Do we have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Martha. It's been moved in second for approval. Is there further discussion? We will now vote with a yes or no roll call for approval of the consent agenda. District 1, Carol Berry?
Yes.
District 2, Margaret Pace is yes. District 3, Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
District 4, Anne Martha?
Yes.
District 5, Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
District 6, Charlie Patterson?
Yes.
District 7, Josh Baggett?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. The next agenda item is policy monitoring. Mr. House?
Yes, Madam Chair. Please find in your board packets information on Executive Limitation 8, which is commitment to accomplish accountability accreditation and reporting to the public. This executive limitation has one compliance expectation, which is to ensure that Director of Schools should not fail to maintain an accountability program. Specifically, CMCS has a comprehensive strategic planning process, which includes using Level 1 student achievement and Level 2 department performance data. In addition to this data, administration meets regularly to formally listen to our performance as perceived by school leaders, stakeholder groups and department leaders. Level 1, schools and district are expected to meet annual AMOs, which stands for annual measurable objectives identified by specifically for the district based on ESAT baseline, built from the previous year's performance. As a result of additional concerns with COVID-19, the Tennessee Assembly passed an emergency legislation stating that no adverse action may be taken against any student, teacher, school or LEA based on the whole part on student achievement data generated from the 2019-2020 10 ready assessments. 2021 targets will be based on student performance in seven areas measured through three pathways. Your board packets reflect the seven areas to be assessed as well as how scores are to be calculated. Furthermore, senior leadership team members design annual strategic work-based changes at the state and national levels as well as district works, work that need to be implemented to improve, to accomplish Level 2 requirements. Feedback from stakeholder groups assist in the design and implementation of the work. Monthly reports to the board are presented along with mid-year and annual reviews to monitor progress and next steps. In conclusion, CMCS will complete the high school accreditation with Advanced Ed, now known as Cognia, in the fall of 2020. In March 2017, the district transferred ISO certification to Preferred Registered Group and the district was recertified in May 2018. CMCS is the only school district in the state of Tennessee that holds certification and accreditation through both of these organizations and one non-public district nationally, national ISO certification. Madam Chair, that does conclude Executive Limitation 8.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve ELA as presented? I didn't hear that.
So move, Josh.
Josh, okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Martha. It's been moved in second for approval. Is there further discussion? We will now vote with a yes or no roll call for approval of ELA. Carol Berry?
Yes.
Margaret Pace is yes. Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
Anne Martha?
Yes.
Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
Charlie Patterson?
Yes.
Josh Baggett?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. The next agenda item is reports. Mr. House?
Yes, I'm going to invite Anthony Johnson, our Communications Department. I believe Robin is with him, who's in charge of our foundation, to talk to us about Goal 14, which is equitably align community resources to our district needs. So with that being said, Mr. Johnson, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. House, and good evening, board. So Goal Number 14, Equitably Align Community Resources to District Needs. A few years ago, when Mr. House came on board, we started to, under his leadership, take a deep dive and a closer look at equity across all of our programs for all, almost 37,000 of our students. And with the Communications Department, with our drive to engage the community in support of student achievement, we looked at our existing partnerships and resources and also looked at opportunities to grow partnerships and resources. And one of the first ones that we instituted last year in 2019 was the Prep for Success Program, which I know many of you have heard about. But since last year, I did not have an opportunity to report out. So in 2019, we had more than 300 volunteers from the community who stuffed over 10,000 bags for our students on free lunch from donations over about $30,000 from community partners. So those supplies went to our students who were most at need to start the beginning of the school year. With the pandemic, the 2020 Day of Action event was canceled. But obviously, if you've seen video or you were there at the event last year, there's a lot of touching of supplies and moving back and forth with hundreds of volunteers. So we did cancel that event for this year, but we gave our sponsors options, either to refund the contribution that they gave, to allocate those funds towards current programs, either with United Way, who is a partner in this program, or to the Education Foundation, especially for the Teacher Warehouse, or to save those funds for the 2021 Prep for Success. And I'm really excited about the conversation that CMCS, the Education Foundation and the United Way are having for 2021, which is looking at doing an even bigger, community-driven event. So we're continuing to look at options for that, continuing to engage other community partners. And so this, over the next few months, we'll develop a plan, a very comprehensive marketing and development plan for that program. And we look forward to sharing more with you about that in the future. Next slide, please. So I'm going to turn it over now to Robin Burton, who is the Executive Director of the Clarksville Montgomery County Education Foundation. She actually joined us in February, right before the pandemic. And so she's had, you know, it's always a difficult transition, but it especially made even more difficult, but she's done a fantastic job. Her background, she most recently served before joining us as Director of Marketing at Premier Speakers Bureau in Franklin, Tennessee, but she had, I think, either over or close to a decade of experience as the Director of Communications for the Clarksville Montgomery County Economic Development Council. So I'm excited, for my first time, to introduce to you Robin Burton, and I'm going to turn it over to her to talk more about the Education Foundation.
Thank you, Anthony, and thank you, everyone, for allowing me to join y'all even for a little bit tonight just to kind of highlight some bigger initiatives that we had this past year and let you know what we have going on. First is the Teacher Warehouse Online. For those who may not be aware, the Teacher Warehouse saves our teachers close to $30,000 a year in out-of-pocket expenses on school supplies. And it's at Central Services South, which may not always be convenient for our teachers to go to. So in April, we were actually sitting on go, ready to launch a Teacher Warehouse Online portal that's through the CMCS website. And our teachers can go on, they can order the items. We will pick and pack and pull and courier them straight to their classroom just to make sure that everybody's getting equal opportunity to really utilize that warehouse and really use resources that we have donated and that we purchased. We also do anticipate a much more critical need for supplies next year. Buried supplies, you know, everything from your basic all the way to your hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies and things like that for the classroom. So I will be excited when we can finally launch it for real. Hopefully, late fall, all 41 schools will be able to access it. And I'm looking forward to updating the public on that as we move forward. Excellent. So Partners in Education. For those who may not be familiar with that either, this is where several, actually close to 250 businesses in town partner with individual schools to help bring resources and needs to them individually. The data that I am showing is only through mid-March due to COVID. So the total value this past year in in-kind and volunteer and monetary contributions was 195,965,36. Total volunteer hours, 1,714. And the goal moving forward is to continue to foster those relationships with our businesses, but also work to really align the needs that our schools are all getting served to the best capacity of what they need and making sure everyone's communicating and freewriting what we can to make it easier for everyone involved. So when COVID-19 hit mid-March, I think everyone was in a situation that we had never experienced. You know, it was something that we weren't sure what next steps would be. But my first plan and course of action was how could the foundation step in and help students, classroom, teachers, different departments? What can we do as a foundation to bring resources? So in the last couple of months, we have been able to supply a little bit over $18,000 worth of goods and services to our teachers and students in various departments, things such as supplying 32,000 plastic bags to help with meal distribution, packing a classroom, packing up school supplies. And with the school supplies, we were able to contribute 5,500 school supply items that went home with distance learning packets because a lot of our students that don't have access to those resources and those items and that right there is absolutely what the foundation is for, is to make sure our students are well-equipped. We partnered with our friends at Visit Clarksville and were able to secure 36 pop-up tents to help with meal distribution during the inclement weather. We did obviously have a very rainy spring, so they just came in very helpful. And then we were able to raise $10,000 worth of corporate and individual sponsorships to be able to supply every single graduating senior with a York sign free of charge just for them to have as a point of pride and something to show off that we are supporting our seniors 100% through this. So our next steps, first and foremost, obviously I have a marketing and communications background, and I think telling our story is critical. I've heard more than once in the past couple of months that people don't know we exist. And for me, I need to make it a point to fix that and correct that. And so we're really going to hit hard developing a comprehensive marketing plan, holistic, hitting every way that we can tell people our story and tell them our good news and tell them what we're doing for our school system. I'm going to look to align the population of students who need our resources and make sure that we're supporting people holistically and that we are paying attention to those who truly need our support, especially going into the fall more than ever with everything that's been going with COVID. I'm looking to have larger-level, high-end corporate sponsors, kind of like a diamond-level sponsorship. We're going to continue rewarding academic success. Our Academic Awards Banquet is going into its 35th, 36th year, I believe, and that's an incredible event that grows every year. And I'm proud of what that has turned into and how prestigious of an event it is in the state of Tennessee. I think with our technology department, we have great resources that we can really align our grant applications, how we track our Partners in Education and in our employee-giving campaign to make it easier for our employees. And then one of the other big things is creation of a big idea grant program that will fund larger initiatives so we can really diversify what we're supporting. And there's just a lot of things that don't hit that $1,000 threshold of our Great Idea Grants because it costs more and they're bigger. So I want to be able to really step up and help the other initiatives that our teachers have as well. So this is a quick recap. The total foundation contribution, including our Partners in Education, was a little over a half million dollars. This does not include our in-kind, and we do get a lot of in-kind contributions and donations. We were able to award $20,717 in Great Idea Grants. This impacted a little over 6,300 students. And as I said, only going through mid-March, the dollars saved by teachers through Teacher Warehouse was $28,570. We do have some events coming up, stuff the bus. We do that every year with Five Star Media. They're a great partner with us on that at the area Wal-Mart's July 25th and 26th. That all goes directly to the Teacher Warehouse. Fall Employee Appreciation. So the foundation's looking for a way to just give back and tell all our employees the first week of school before the students go back, just to thank you. We appreciate everything you've been doing. We've had to cancel some events, and so I felt that it was in our best interest to do something just to show how much we appreciate, because we did have to cancel certain things that were for employee appreciation. And I look forward to updating you more on that. Pie breakfast has been canceled this year, but we are moving forward with the award recognitions and the plaques and certificates because we do have so many people who step up and do so many great things that we want to make sure they're being recognized. And then our Vision to Reality fundraiser is still on target for November 20th, but we will start more intensely planning probably next month as we know what it's going to look like moving forward. And any questions as it relates to the foundation?
Robin, I want to officially and publicly welcome you to the CMC Foundation team. And we're looking forward to your leadership. And we know that you will continue with the theme of the foundation beginning where the tax dollars end. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to. For the seniors, I thought that was great. Excellent idea.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. House, I hate to interrupt, but you'll have to unmute.
All right, that is, I think my wife may have done that, just FYI. Our next goal is Goal 6, which is to explore the impact of employee attendance. So at this time, I'm going to invite our Chief Human Resources Officer, Janine Johnson, to guide us through this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. House and board members. And I'm excited to get to introduce all of you to Erica Christmas. She's going to be assisting me with this presentation. And Erica is one of our HR coordinators, and she's been with the district approximately one year. So we're ready to share some information with you tonight. If you can move to the next slide. Very important to understand with employee attendance is that all employees are important. Sometimes when we think about attendance, we immediately go to teachers, but we do have a lot of employees that do impact student achievement. And when employees are absent, the effects are felt throughout the district. Think about the bus driver isn't driving the bus, our nurses, our custodians, front office, child nutrition, teachers and aides. So many of them impact our students every day. Next slide. A little information on what some research says. A 10-day increase in teacher absence equates to losing six to 10 days of learning in ELA and 15 to 25 days in math. And Duke study shows that students' math scores fell by 3.3% when their teacher was absent for 10 days or more. Next slide. Research also says that over their time in grades K through 12, a student will spend approximately 180 days with a substitute teacher, which is equivalent to one full academic year. Next slide. With that being said, we're going to share some information with you about substitute employees. Erica?
Hi, good evening, Mr. House and board members. Thank you. To carry on with our report, our substitute employees are an important group to support with resources and training as they perform essential work throughout the district. The academy that we have at Central Office, as we're inviting those who are interested in substitute team, I'd like them to know that they are part of the foundation of our district and their work is important. We're fortunate to have a strong pool of retirees in a subpool with a diverse background of experience and expertise. And for those of you who may not be aware, I do want to highlight something that's very unique for us in that we provide subs for, yes, teachers, but also for our special education aides, our teacher pipeline residents, our bus drivers, our nurses, and we contract a service to provide substitutes for child nutrition as well. Next slide. Okay, so a little bit of data for you this evening. Please keep in mind, as I report data from this school year, I am referencing August 29th, March 12th of 2020. Our daily average absence rate among teachers and our special education assistants, so I do want to be very specific about how this was calculated or who it was calculated for, and that would be teachers and the special education assistants. for, and that would be teachers and the special education assistants, 8.3%. As I've looked to the past and analyzed some of that data, it looks like that's, we've had an average of around 8% for the last three years. This year, August through March, we had a 90% fill rate by our subprogram with the remaining fill rates being supported at the school level. To support our subs, we provide them their evaluation feedback, and that is given to them through direct observation. That's also given to them through evaluation feedback that's garnered from the teacher. Also offer mentoring opportunities. I mentioned the great pool that we have of our retirees, and whenever we have a substitute who may be struggling or is just new to the classroom in this role, we do offer sub-mentoring opportunities for them to be successful. And I'm very proud of our staff development that we have for our substitute teachers. We want to increase that and their professional development opportunities, and we have continued their professional development opportunities on a weekly basis since our closure. So something that I'm very proud of and substitute group is really appreciative of. And really, probably the most important point in this slide, so if you've tuned me out, listen now. We have had 175 substitute teachers hired into full-time classified or certified positions, and that is just this year. That is an incredible number that far exceeds any year that we have had our substitute program in-house. And we are extremely proud of the quality of substitute teachers that we have. It's a little bittersweet. Principals say, I'm so sorry, I'm taking one of your subs, and I tell them, no, I'm glad that we could be your number one recruiting tool. So that is a point of pride that we have such quality subs. Next slide, please. And so a little bit of district data. CMCSS grows an average of 3% each year. I do want to remark here that this 3% increase is teachers and aides, not student population, although, as you know, our student population continues to grow. But as you're looking at this number, please keep in mind that we're referencing teachers and the special education assistants. Also a reminder that the estimate for 1920 only through August to March. And so here in this, you have total absences for the past three school years. So you can see that we're on an increase there. And for our rate of growing at 3% each year, there is a sort of natural tendency to increase there. Thing that I want to point out, I do have a rough forecasted projection of our absences. We were on track to increase by the end of the year about 5% year than last year. So again, rough estimate, but that idea of where we're, next slide, please. Our absence reasons, we sort of, we have lots of categories for absence reasons, and we've taken them and we've given you the top four absence reasons here. So you can see that by and large of our total absences, we have sick leave being the highest percentage of nearly half. And then we have our professional leave, the next highest category at 15%. And I would like to mention here that we have an abundance of quality professional development, and kudos to that department on their work for professional development. We in HR support providing subs so our teachers can have that important learning. And so what we do Monday and Friday tend to be our highest absent days. We do work with schools to offer PD during Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, and hoping for next school year to work on a collaborative document where building-level principals, as they're looking to schedule, you know, can see when they are doing some of their in-house professional developments so that we can continue to fine-tune the balance of days where we have teachers who are absent so that we can cover those. I also want to just remark before I hand it back over to Janine for FMLA that keep in mind with our sick leave, that is, of course, for the employee, but also for the care of immediate family members as well. That's included in that. Janine?
Next slide. FMLA stands for Family Medical Leave Act, and this is a federal law that is a benefit for our employees. And it does require a employer to provide mandatory leave up to 12 weeks per year if an employee qualifies. So you'll just see here, these are the number of total approved leave requests. Generally, the number one reason our employees take family medical leave would be maternity. We obviously have a large number of women of childbearing age, and so we do see a lot of maternity leaves. Some of our employees choose to be out for 12 weeks, some choose to be out for a year. So these types of approved leaves would have been listed in that previous slide also. But you'll just see that oddly enough, 17, 18, and 18, 19 had 492 exact, which I thought was interesting. But you'll see that breakdown between certified and classified. And again, it is also beyond maternity. It is also for a serious illness for an employee or a family member, and there are also different military things that fall under FMLA. So as you see, this is a large group. The one thing about FMLA, usually this is planned, not always, but most likely it is planned, and it's something that our sub-team prepares for this summer. We've got a member that's already working on FMLA leaves that have already been submitted and approved for next school year. So she's already placing substitutes in those positions for next year. Next slide. This is absentee data. Want to make sure you realize this is hours, not days. When you look at this, it's like, oh, my gosh, 31,000 days. This is hours. I just thought it would be interesting for us to see the number of hours of leave, and you'll see that classified, certified, and administrators. We, as a district, for those of us that work 12 months a year, we do receive additional vacation days, and it ranges anywhere from 10 to 18 days a year based on how many years you've been with the district. So you'll see that under the classified, that annual leave, that's where that would be coming from, our certified annual leave, they do have annual leave that is built into their calendar. And then, of course, administrators with their annual leave, that would be 12-month administrators. And then personal leave, our employees receive three personal leave days. That's for all employees district-wide per year. And then there's the sick leave, and the sick leave ranges anywhere from 10 days a year based on the calendar up to 12 days a year. So this just gives you an idea of the number of hours that our employees have had to use of variety of leave. And of course, we do encourage our 12-month employees to use that annual leave, that vacation time to recharge their batteries, and it always helps when folks are able to go on a fall break, a spring break, or take some time off during the summer. Next slide.
Erica, in looking at some district-wise, we want to bring context with a little bit of data and literature. So according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, full-time employees will be absent nearly 3% on any given day. And I do want to remind you that our teacher and sped aid average has been about eight. And of course, that is a daily average, but we are past the national average, the typical national average. The Society for Human Resource Management indicates the following impacts related to this statistic. They actually have 10 or 11 impacts, but I just thought that these two were really interesting, that there's lower individual activity and the financial absenteeism. And that comes in many forms, but overtime compensation to cover roughly half of all absences. Next slide. Interestingly, coworkers are perceived to be 29 and a half less productive when covering for absent employees. Now, this can be due to several reasons. You can have reasons that are related to prioritizing their own work over covering for the coworker, or sometimes that is related to attitude and feeling negative feelings towards having to cover for a coworker, especially if absenteeism is a perceived problem. Supervisor productivity is impaired from adjustments to having to take time out of their day, sometimes unexpectedly, to work on covering absences. I see this most with our building-level principals and having to take an enormous amount of their morning to sort of help their attendance assistance with restructuring at the building level to make sure that the absences are covered. The national statistic is about four hours per week on that, taking out of this supervisor-principal time. Overall loss of productivity, 36.6 measurement there. Next slide.
So why do we address absenteeism? These are, obviously, we know they're, we do feel there is a connection to student achievement. That's very important. But some of the other things are increased stress that it does cause on our employees and possibly the students, lower workplace morale, inadequate staffing, and increased financial costs to the district. Next slide. As practices, we've looked at a lot of different things, and it is very important to have a written formal attendance policy to be clear and consistent with attendance expectations, to provide employee rewards and support, and also understanding the root cause of poor attendance. Often, I'll speak with supervisors when they have an employee that has poor attendance, and there's usually a few root causes that we can go back to trying to determine what's going on. Next slide. So we've got some next steps for our next school year. We will be having to monitor the impact of the Family First Corona Response Act that does provide rights to employees related to the COVID-19. So we are being very aware of that. We have developed a new policy, and we've done some training with our supervisors. So we'll be working on that for this next year.
Also going to be working on an attendance campaign at the district level and at the school level. I surveyed principals last semester, and many of them, if they had any sort of incentive, they indicated jeans day as the most common reward. So we need to shift to, I think, better, more accountability, starting with onboarding and highlighting the job description, the importance of attendance. I think there's some work that we can increase there, creating those campaigns and looking at what really motivates our employees and makes them feel valued so that they want to come to work every day. Importantly here, too, exploring the teacher absentee rate versus student achievement. We have a lot of national data. I think that we referenced, but I think it's really important now to drill down into our district in particular so that we can understand this better.
And then finally, we're looking at adding resources to supervisors and principals to support approaches for good attendance. We know that some principals seem to manage attendance at their school a little bit better than others, so trying to find out what works for them and then sharing those ideas with other principals that are open to learning more about monitoring attendance and some of the little tricks of the trade. Any questions?
Hello, this is Herb Nelson. I had one question. Considering the current climate that we're in with the COVID-19, has there been any idea of setting a mask for employees as they come back? How safe the schools are, what we're doing to prevent, you know, spread of any of the COVID virus throughout the facility?
Yes, and that's actually something that I'll talk a little bit about, Mr. Nelson, during my director's report. We are in the midst of some pretty heavy lifting in terms of our communicable disease and reopening team that that team meets twice a week. And when I say it's a heavy lift to really think through exactly what needs to happen for the 37,000 kids, the 44,000 parents, the 540 employees over the age of 60, the over 3,000, I think, or 4,000 immune-deficient students that we had, that we have. So we really try to think outside of the box, and we're working extremely hard to ensure that we have a plan. So I'll talk about some of the survey data and some other pieces here in just a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Christmas. Thank you, Janine Johnson. We appreciate that insight and reference to where we are from a human resources perspective. Madam Chair? I think we might be on mute. Madam Chair, I think you're still on mute. Dr. Huff?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I had never touched the computer. It flew and did itself. Any comments from the Fort Campbell School Liaison Officer?
We don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Comments from county commissioners?
No comments at this time.
Okay. Any comments from the board members? And again, I'd like to thank CMCSS for all their sincere, dedicated efforts to provide what is best to meet the health and safety needs of all Montgomery County students during these difficult times. I know that the major decisions are extremely complex and are made only after extensive study and data research. And I also know that CMCSS leadership is experienced and is stood and will make changes as soon as they're warranted. Your committed efforts are sincerely appreciated. The next agenda item is Director of Schools report, Mr. House.
Madam Director, I believe there are a couple of other board members.
Oh, I'm sorry. I hate space waste. All right. Any other board members?
Ms. Murtha?
I just want to thank Mr. House for his excellent leadership as well. And right along with what Margaret said, I know that decisions are hard, know that is doing everything for the safety, not only of our person but of the community. And it makes me think of the leadership in New Zealand, kindness, and the cooperative attitude that went on there. And I expect nothing less from Clarkson, Montgomery County, I have to say. And I also am very grateful for the equity initiatives that are forth because are unparalleled, and they are long overdue. Can't thank you enough, Mr. House.
If I may, Mr. House, I'd like to say how much I appreciate the work that you have put in these last several months with everything that's been. Just thankful for everything you guys have done. I support you and you guys as part of our system.
As a district representative, I always have something to say towards the quality of education and the thought process that goes into taking care of our most precious asset, which is the student. Every decision that is made by each of you staff, Mr. House, even as we vote as board members for the betterment of our children. And under policy governance, as you know, Mr. House, our job is to make sure that we bring in or we make sure we have someone on board that is able to give a look at the big picture and actually focus on the needs of the student over the wants of the few. Again, as everyone has said, we appreciate all of the hard work that each of you do. We've gone through a trying process under COVID-19. We don't know where we're going to be going in August, but I know one place that we'll be going. We will continue to rise as an organization. We'll continue to rise as a community, and our students will continue to rise as productive citizens once they become graduates of this great school this year. And our students will continue to rise as productive citizens once they become graduates of this great school this year.
I would just like to state briefly that, Mr. House, we appreciate your, your and your staff, the work that you do, hours that you spend, the extra hours and the courage that you exemplify. And I feel that, you know, we'll look back on this and we can all rest with ease that the decision we are working and that we are living with and will live with in the future will be one that we'll all be proud of.
Any other board members? Now we're ready for the Director of Schools' report, Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing that I'll talk a little bit about is is our reopening plan. As I mentioned just a little while ago, it is a, it is a heavy lift. You know, the last, last several months have been a heavy lift. What we do know is that we want to bring to you in in late, late June or early July, a finished product in that plan. So we're working every week to to take a look at at some of the trends, take a look at the advice, you know, from the Health Department, take a look at other educational agencies working with, you know, the score organization as well, which is a education advocacy agency out of Nashville, to also, you know, grabbing data from the Chiefs for Change organization as well. So we're using multiple opportunities to to take a look at what we feel like this should look like. What I can tell you right now, which is, which I think you guys are aware already, our goal is to get back into full in-person school, much like a big number of the individuals that are on this call right now from from the Clarksville High School area that want and have a desire for their children to be back in athletics. I want want you all to know that we have that desire as well. And and we plan on moving in that direction sooner than later. The second option first is full in-person. The second option is a hybrid option that would allow for about fifty percent of our kids to be in school so many days a week and another fifty percent of our kids to to be in school another couple of days a week. And then the third option is is virtual. So our plan will encompass us able to point in the direction of either of those three plans and to effectively be able to operate our school system. I think the difference between this and the difference between what we did before over the course of the last few months since school, before school was out, we had to lean heavily on on parents because it happened, you know, so fast. And most school systems had to provide resources. And and we know that was difficult on parents as well. I'm a parent of an elementary school student and a and a high school student. And and that was not, you know, an easy, easy way for for us either. What I would like to share real quick is some data from a recent survey. I think we've had between eight and nine thousand responses so far. I'm sure we'll get some additional responses in. But this was just a snapshot of of what that parent survey is telling us thus far. So I'll have our Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Anthony Johnson, to to join me and and talk a little bit about that reopening survey that that we most recently set out.
Yes, sir. So this data is compiled as of yesterday around nine AM. Our technology department pulled this. So we were able to dispatch the survey where each parent and guardian got a customized link so that we could see and pinpoint data right to a house, which was very important, especially when we start talking about internet accessibility. But what we're able to, as of yesterday, we had around fifty percent of students who were represented. So around fifty percent of our students' parents had submitted a survey, which is really a high return rate for us. And out of that, just looking at some quick demographic info, around forty-three percent were represented as our free and reduced, even though the district's around fifty percent. And then you can see the demographic data as far as ethnic racial background right there. So David, if you'll scroll down just a little bit. So this next item, this was an item where we asked parents to rank their comfortability with different, basically four different scenarios. And so what you're seeing represented is what parents chose as their first option. So what was their most preferred option for returning to school? As you can see, the majority chose the traditional school onsite. And as you've referenced and as we've talked about a lot, that's all of our preference. So fifty-four point four percent chose that as their preferred option for returning to school. Next would be a completely remote or virtual instruction option, around eighteen percent. And then I've got to move this real quick so I can see. So the the mixture of onsite, remote being fifteen point four percent. And then the option for parents to be able to choose. And so as you referenced, of course, that our reopening plan is looking at being able to accommodate all of those. David, if you'll scroll down just a little bit more. So this was a multiple select option. So we asked parents to select the options that they felt would be important for us to take into consideration as we move forward with our plans. And so the first, the first two items, and it's a little bit challenging to tell, but so schools continuing to operate remotely until a vaccine is developed, only twenty-three percent of parents selected that option. Schools continuing to operate remotely until more testing is available, twenty-six percent. Students wearing masks, thirty-seven percent. Staff wearing masks, forty-three percent indicated that that was important to them. Making personal protective items such as masks available for students and staff who cannot afford them or don't have them, forty-eight percent felt like that was important for the district to provide those. For social distancing plans, for in-person schooling being developed and implemented, close to half of our parents and guardians felt that that was important. Class sizes being reduced through a staggered student schedule, which I know we'll talk more and more about. But the idea of students coming in on phases, around fifty-five percent of our parents felt like that might be something that would be important for us to consider. And then other building safety measures and policies, including things like routine temperature checks, which we've seen a lot of the CDC guidance, around fifty-five percent of our parents felt that that was important. And if you'll scroll down for me, David, please. So where we start here, as I just pulled out, these were essentially yes, no questions. And so around sixty-seven percent of our parents plan for their child to return to schools in the traditional manner, whether or not we put safety procedures or not in the fall. So sixty-seven percent, very strong percentage, that want their students back in school. Fifty-five percent would consider enrolling their child in a virtual school taught by a C M C S S teacher if schools open in the traditional manner. So if we offer that as an option, which I know our instruction and curriculum team is working hard to develop those options, seventy percent said that they do have the ability to transport their child should the CDC guidelines continue to impact bus transportation processes. And I know it's been very public, the CDC's guidance and how challenging that would be to reduce our capacity by almost one-third, should we, should we have to follow that? So ninety-four percent of our stakeholders that completed the survey indicated that they do have reliable internet access. And so, of course, we've been doing a lot of work to figure out what we can do for that six percent. Seventy-seven percent state that their child has a device other than a cell phone for use in virtual learning. Seventy-eight percent feel comfortable assisting their child with the technology required for virtual learning. Sixty-five percent feel comfortable supporting their child with grade level academic content. And thirty-seven, and this was a big one for us, are concerned with childcare access if alternative models for opening are implemented in the fall. And so, Mr. House, I don't know if you were going to reference this or not, but we will be dispatching more surveys for parents and guardians throughout the summer to, of course, gauge as as the conditions change around this pandemic. And starting tomorrow, we will be dispatching our first series of employee surveys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The the next item that I wanted to update you on is 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 that even though we are not officially in our, even though we're officially in our summer session, we decided to move forward to provide child nutrition opportunities. As you might remember, during the pandemic at its height and during the school year, from essentially March the twelfth until May twenty-second, we we were open at about twenty-two, twenty-three different sites and provided meals at those sites as well as education resources. We've scaled that down to seven sites and and five bus routes. Those specific sites and bus routes are on our website and we are currently serving students. As I mentioned earlier, there are, there's a large contingency of individuals on the on the call tonight that were very concerned about the decision to to move forward with with virtual virtual athletics as as kind of a first step. There has been support and opposition in reference to our our virtual athletics first step towards moving towards our normal return. Most of the emails and conversations that that I have have been extremely constructive. I had a great conversation with Dr. Andrew Evans this past weekend that really spoke to, you know, the social and emotional needs of students and how many of our kids are struggling at a high level. That's a lot of the work that Dr. Mary Gist has been working on for several months as well, so that we can continue that support. He was speaking specifically to those needs and and how athletes may be hampered moving forward. So I appreciate that constructive conversation. There have been heartfelt opinions that that essentially speak to people wanting their children back to normalcy. I also unfortunately encountered my first social media troll this past weekend, also a threatening communication at my home mailbox and a recent bullish attempt to discredit me personally and to do harm to my professional career. This, of course, is something that has concerned my wife and I. And we've had conversations with with our children in terms of what, you know, what that, what that has looked like and what it means. This pandemic is taking, taking us through uncharted waters. And and we want to safely get back to to normalcy. And and we're definitely working towards that. And I want everyone to to realize that what I have shared with most of the patrons that have reached out is that C M C S S values athletics and other activities that provide a vast number of benefits to our students. The district team used documents from the NF H S in making decisions. The document states NF H S endorse the idea of returning students to school-based athletic activities in any and all situations where it can be safely done. Based on the number of athletic, extracurricular and academic activities that would need to be considered while equitably aligning the use of physical space in our buildings, the district has determined that the safest course of action at this time is to encourage our coaches to connect with student athletes virtually to provide a robust experience as possible. Given the limitations of what the outdoor activities would have included, we believe that connecting virtually can accomplish many, not all, of some of the benefits without risking exposure to our students. Additionally, the district has provided a technology integration coach for any coach needed support in navigating the tools needed to accomplish this. This is not a permanent fix and the idea is to move forward to to hopefully take, take the next step in in short order. As fall sports draw closer and the need for athletes to condition, weight train increases, the district is working with T S S A, TSA, T S S A A and our athletic directors to seek solutions to problems that the pandemic has created. We're continuously reviewing the situation as we look to make decisions about these activities moving forward in July. We will hear from T S S A A tomorrow. We'll continue to consult, consult the Health Department, our senior leadership team, our communicable disease team, and another information and data that that comes in. But I want everybody on the call to to know that I'm not working against you. I'm not working against your children. This this has been, this has been a heavy weight and we're going to get there. I want to make certain that, you know, our student athletes especially have the opportunity to compete. I've heard very clearly from from many of you that would like to see your student athletes move forward to have the opportunity to to play at the next level possibly. We we're going to provide that and and we're looking forward to continuing. We meet next week again. And and we'll look forward to providing, you know, additional insights as as deemed necessary. So with that, Madam Chair, that does conclude my comments and Director's report. I think you may be on mute again, Margaret.
Okay, I just wanted to say how much we sincerely appreciate your sincerity and your dedication. Thank everyone for attending the virtual school board meeting tonight. Our next formal school board meeting is scheduled for July the fourteenth. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.